December 1st, 2025 Crest Hill City Council Meeting is ordered at 7:00 PM. Yes, everyone please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
(inaudible)
Roll call please, Chris.
Grace Solomon.
Here.
Jamie Malloy.
I'm here.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Angelo Disario.
Here.
Dorell Jefferson.
Here.
Body Gazal.
Here.
Tina Overland.
Present.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have any citizens or special requests this evening, but there is a need for a public hearing for the 2025 Annual Property Tax Levy. I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, to go into a public hearing setting. Roll call please, Chris.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Body Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing is open at 7:02 PM. This is for a public hearing for the 2025 Annual Property Tax Levy. I will turn it over to our Finance Director Glenn Gurkey for a presentation. Glenn?
Okay, it's okay. It's gonna be a pretty short presentation, so I'll do it right from here. We're presenting the 2025 Annual Tax Levy. Per Illinois statute, public taxing bodies that are home-ruled are allowed to raise tax levies annually by rate of the inflation or CPI, Consumer Pricing Index, or 5%, whichever is lower. The tax levy is a process by which the city requests funding from its local taxpayers. This funding is collected through property taxes. In the state of Illinois, local real estate property taxes, sometimes called ad valorem tax, which means according to value, are based on properties equalized assessed value, and the local tax rate applied to that value after any exceptions are subtracted. The city must adopt its tax levy and certify it with Will County no later than the last Tuesday of December annually. Okay, I'd just like to go in and give you a slight, small presentation of it, and because the tax levy is limited to the Consumer Price Index or 5%, it's a pretty simple process, and actually it's pretty much dictated by the Will County government. So as you can see right now, I got a screen up here of the 24 municipal property tax rates. Crest Hill is right in the center of our tax rates amongst the other municipalities in Will County. So our rate is, again, in the median, but below the average. Okay. Now, when we look at the tax rate, it can be increased by the CPI, which is .29%. So if you look at the screen I have up there, it shows what our tax rate was last year. You multiply it by the 1.029%, which could be the increase, or 1.029, and that gives you the $2,760,000. Now, what that does not include is new properties that were built in this fiscal year. So in the line below that, you'll see the net asset values of the new properties that have been, come into Crest Hill's being. So when you look at that, the total property value, and you go through the total, I guess, calculations of this thing, the maximum cap according to that limit is $2.785 million. Now, there is one thing in there. Those are estimates, and they haven't been finalized yet. So the other option is to go to the straight 5%, which we'll put the cap at, from the $2.6 million to the $2.8. So when we ask for the tax levy, I have to put in a taxable amount. This is actually amount, not a percentage. So I go, what I do is I put in the maximum amount, which is the $2.8 million. That's what we're gonna ask for our levy. Now, when the actual EAVs come in, in March, maybe late February, they will tell us what the actual amount is. So it can never go above this amount, so they will never give us more than $2.8 million, and it probably will go down. I'm most assured that it's gonna be less than that. But I'm trying to capture as much as I can of the new properties that came into existence in this past tax year, so that they're paying as much as they can and sharing the wealth, so to speak, amongst the other taxing residents and commercial businesses. Now, go to the next slide. You'll see how your property tax bill is actually split up. There are several taxing bodies that are included with your property tax bill. Of that, of that, the city of Crest Hill is only about 7%. You'll see that the Crest Hill Road and Bridges is 5%. You have a .5%. You have the Local Park District was 5%. The Library is 3%. The Will County Government is 6%. Forest Preserve is 1, and the Will County Billing Commission. But the large share is gonna be the school districts, the high school, and the elementary school, which is by far more than 50%. And then you get the Fire District, another 13%. So we're fourth in that list of taxing bodies in there, just for the city of Crest Hill. And what this next graph shows, it shows how the EAVs, your property values, are increasing, but yet the tax history, it shows it's on decreasing now. So as the property values are going up, they're going up faster than the tax rate we're allowed to, because again, we're getting limited to the Consumer Pricing Index or inflation rate, or 5%, whichever is lower. So as, again, the EAVs go up, our property tax rate is actually going down in comparison with that. And then you got our taxing receipts. Again, the taxing receipts have been increasing on a trend. However, last year it was a little dip, but they are going up, and that's because of all the new buildings that are coming into play, all the new property growth that Crest Hill has had. And again, this is the last taxing, or the inflation rate, the maximum I can get for the inflation rate from taxes of last year to this year. That's where I was talking about the 2.8. That pretty much does it with our taxing, our tax levy. There's not much room we can do with this. Again, it's just calculated by the 5% or the CPI. There's not much you can do. And I do want to say that there were some errors that were identified in the final docs that go for signature. Our clerk, deputy clerk, has corrected those, and so they will be on the final docs. So when you approve this and do the motion, please include that with the changes, so everything's right. We'll correct the misspellings and correct names and stuff like that.
And the Alderman instead of Alderwoman.
Yes, yeah, that'll be corrected.
Found all three of them, just so you know.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions of Glenn on the presentation? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step to the podium and ask a question in regards to the presentation of the tax levy for 2025? Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. With that, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, to close the public hearing at 7:09 PM. Roll call please, Chris.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Body Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we are back in regular session at 7:09 PM. I would now ask, we do have 14 consent agenda items this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment for any one of the agenda items that are listed? Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. With that being said, is there any agenda item that would be like, that you would like to have removed from any of the city council members? Hearing none, I will begin the reading of the 14 consent agenda items that were all discussed at last, most of them were discussed at last Monday evening's work session, and this would be for approval of the 14 that I am about to read. First one is 6A, Approve an Ordinance for the Levy and Assessment of Taxes for the Fiscal Year Beginning May 1st, 2026, and Engineering, April 30th, 2027, for the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. 6B, Approve an Ordinance Abating the Tax Heretoe Levied for the Year 2025, to Pay the Principal of and Interest on General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Water Works and Sewage Systems, Alternate Revenue Source, Series 2019A, of the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Agenda Item 6C, Approve an Ordinance Abating the Tax Heretoe Levied for the Year 2025, to Pay the Principal of and Interest on General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Sales Tax Alternate Revenue Source, Series 2019B, of the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Agenda Item 6D, Approve the Minutes of the Work Session Meeting Held on November 10th, 2025. Agenda Item Number 6E, Approve the Minutes from the Regular Meeting Held on November 17th, 2025. Agenda Item 6F, Approve a Resolution for a Professional Services Agreement for Design Engineering Services for the Theodore Retaining Wall Replacement between Knapp and Barthalone, by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited, in the Amount of $39,690. Agenda Item 6G, Approve a Resolution Approving a Professional Service Agreement for the WY 2012 Water Audits and Non-Revenue Water Reduction Consultation, by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Engineering Enterprises Incorporated, for an Amount of $29,000. Agenda Item 6H, Approve a Resolution Approving an Agreement for the Installation of a Maintenance Access Road Adjacent to the EJ and E Railroad Property from the City Property Located at Oakland and Caton Farm Road, to the City's Existing Diversion Structure, by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and John R. Russ &amp; Company Incorporated, for an Amount of $28,001. Agenda Item 6I, Approve a Resolution Approving the Adaption, Adoption of a Complete Streets Policy. Agenda Item 6J, Approve a Resolution for a Professional Services Agreement for a Four-Year Water System Generator Replacement Program Design Services, by and between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Strand &amp; Associates Incorporated, in the Amount of $202,000. Agenda Item 6K, Approve an Ordinance Amending Chapter 12.28, Construction of Utility Facilities in the Rights-of Way of Title II Streets and Sidewalks of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Agenda Item 6L, Approve an Ordinance Approving the Final Plaid of Subdivision, Special Use Permit, and Multiple Variations to the Crest Hill Zoning Ordinance and Crest Hill Code of Ordinances, with Respect to Certain Real Property Known as the Stanley Gustafson Park Located at 2227 Park Road Street in Crest Hill, Illinois, the Application of the City of Crest Hill. Agenda Item 6M, Approve the Expenditure for Wonderware and Dell Support Renewals for One Year for the SCADA System for the East Sewage Treatment Plant, in the Amount of $24,090.27. And Agenda Item 6N, Approval of the Regular and Overtime Payroll from November 3rd, 2025, to November 16th, 2025, in the Amount of $289,758.82. Motion would be in order?
So moved, as presented with the Corrections on A, B, and C, as stated.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, with the discussions that were previously held for the Corrections. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call please, Chris.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Body Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Angelo Disario.
Yes.
Motion carries. Your ordinance and resolution numbers, 6A will be ordinance 2039. 6B will be ordinance 2040. 6C is 2041. 6F is resolution 1359. 6G, resolution 1360. 6H, resolution 1361. 6I, resolution 1362. 6J, resolution 1363. 6K, ordinance 2042. And 6L is ordinance 2043.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the Mayor's Report. I do not, this is the reports and communications from departments and elected officials. I do not have any agenda items this evening. I would like to make a couple comments. The first one, the, the snowstorm that we had on Saturday and into Sunday morning, very heavy snow, very wet snow. I just want to extend my gratitude to Public Works and to the Police Department for a fantastic job. That is the worst snowstorm that we've had ever in November, and it was a very difficult one to manage with the amount of snow that came down and for the length of it. I know that the members of Public Works were out there for over 36 straight hours to make sure that everybody was safe and all the streets were passable for the police, the fire department. The police department were out there, just as every other day, for all of it, also handling all the calls that came in. So I want to extend my gratitude to both of them for a job well done on the first snowstorm of the year of any magnitude, and it looks like we're having more snow tonight. There's supposed to be more snow on Wednesday and more snow on Friday. So we ask for patience and cooperation from our residents, too, to help clean their driveways and their sidewalks. Please do not throw the snow into the street. That just affects the plowing services that we have to complete. And anybody that still has their cars parked on the road, I'm sure you have been ticketed by now. So going forward in the future, after you take care of your responsibilities for your violations now, I would ask that you would please cooperate with us in the future. It's all for the safety of you, your neighbors, and the rest of the citizens and visitors that we have in the city of Crest Hill. But again, to the Police Department, Public Works, job well done. And to the management team of Blaine Wing, and to Julius Hansen, who were on site and communicating during the whole process also, job well done. The only other thing, I would just want to say that I know that Alderperson, Alderwoman Gazal was here over the weekend with some of her helpers, decorating the whole inside of this council chambers, outside in the hallway and a little bit outside. Job well done to you two. It looks very nice in here, and I don't want to steal her thunder, but the Winter Fest is this Saturday, so she'll talk about that going forward. Okay, that is it for the Mayor, and if anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them. Hearing none, we will move on to our City Clerk, Christine Verchey Hall. Chris?
Good evening, and I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of the City Clerk? Okay, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our City Treasurer, support our Treasurer Jamie Malloy.
Good evening. I have an approval for a list of bills issued through December 2nd, 2025, in the Amount of $1,865,059.85.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the regular and overtime payroll from November 3rd, 2025, to November 16th, 2025, in the Amount of $289,758.82. Questions or comments?
No.
Roll call please.
I'm sorry. It's a list of bills through December 2nd, in the Amount of $1,865.
My fault. My fault. I read the wrong one.
That's okay.
Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Tina Overland?
No.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Body Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I would also like to thank Alderwoman Gazal and her daughter, Polar, who came in in the snowstorm and decorated, and was here also on Sunday, and did a beautiful job, hanging wreaths, decorating the windows. Job well done. Thank you.
Any questions from City Council? Okay, thanks, Jamie. Moving on to our City Attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items under my report, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of City Attorney? Thank you. Moving on to our City Administrator, Blaine Wing. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor. Do have a few items. First one in your packet is item E1. This is in regards to our City Attorney reviewing a ordinance and his overall recommendation on how to address, really something that has been on the books since 1977, as were part of an insurance pool. Felt that to clean up this item, really a repeal would be in place. I know the attorney has drafted and communicated via attorney-client privileged communication with counsel, and then there's the memo that is in tonight's packet, starting on page 258. Again, our attorney's here to answer any questions.
And I'm happy to chime in a little bit on this. It's not just the fact that it's been on the books for a while, and we are in the risk pool. It's also because I think it's a pretty poorly drafted ordinance. I don't know what it was intended to do, as I stated in the packet memo. I don't know really what it was designed to do, but whoever crafted it didn't really make it clear. So I think at this point, because we are in the risk pool, and that, you know, an attorney, if there's an action against the city, an attorney would be provided to any individual elected officials, any individual employees that are sued, as well as obviously an attorney for the city as a whole, if the city is sued as a, just as the municipal corporation, that because of all of that, there's really no need for this to remain on the books. But I think there has been some discussion about, you know, perhaps there needs to be more discussion on this at a work session, so.
I agree with you. That's why I reach out to both of you, or one of you reach out to me. And this needs to be a little bit more explanatory. It's very gray areas that I don't understand it clearly, and I think when we understand something, we always request to be put, you know, on a work session, and so we can ask questions and understand it a little bit better. I understand it's been on the book for 50 years, so another week, it's not gonna make any difference. So I would like to table it. Make motion to table it.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to table the agenda item, Approve an Ordinance Amending Title II Administration of Personnel, Chapter 2.92, Actions Against the City of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments? Roll call please, Chris.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And mayor, the second item I just want to highlight that we have received or I've been given, uh, approximately a hundred of the fill-out petition for the referendum to be placed on the ballot in regards to the abolishment of the civil service. The deadline again is the fifteenth of this month for it to be filed. The attorney would need to go to court and submit the required three hundred and forty signatures or more. So again, I do have additional, um, petition packets and the information. So at this point, again, we still need, um, you know, about two hundred and forty because we, you know, we have about a hundred at this point.
Well, Blaine, I hope people get out there. I know the weather's not the nicest, but, um, you know, while you're shoveling, when your neighbors walk by, get them to sign it. So we got to get to that number. So I hope I bring you some more besides what I brought you tonight. If everybody does their part, it's, it's much easier.
I mean, if this is something that we want to do, then we should try to find a way to do it.
Yeah, again, as a reminder, if every council member or elected official brings in at least forty, we would have the required amount. So, um, you know, really we're hoping to have, you know, just a few worksheets filled out. There's ten signatures on each page. So if everybody got approximately four sheets, you know, completely filled, we would hit, hit that number, the necessary number.
Well, thank you for more blank ones.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Blaine. Moving on to Public Works, I see that trucks are still out and about. So Julius is not here this evening. Do you have anything to add, Blaine, for Public Works?
I think you hit it already, uh, mayor. When, when you spoke, I was in constant communication with our Public Works team, uh, as well as with the police department and our fire district to ensure everything was going through, uh, well through this, uh, snow event. The crews are prepared for this evening and are ready for the, the future storms. So I think we have a, a good process in place.
Okay. City engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. I don't have any report tonight. If anybody has any questions.
Questions of city engineer?
Yeah, uh, with Broadway and Theodore and now the snow hitting and lane closures and that.
Is it, when is that going to be taken care of or?
Theodore is open right now, was opened up early this morning.
Oh, was it?
I had, I got, um, Plowder Road as soon as we opened it up. Broadway is going to probably still be closed for another couple of weeks yet. We still have actual construction needs to get done. They were supposed to be back out there tomorrow, but there's still snow there tonight. Probably not going to make it. And it's going to get cold, so my guess it would be next week. But we got about a week's worth of construction work, just to tie everything back together. But we have contractors out there every day. Residents, if they have any issues, I've been calling myself or the contractor. We've been taking care of them right away. So just kind of letting anybody know if they have any issues, please call the engineering department.
All right, thank you.
Ron, I've, I've had, uh, a few residents email me about the light at Division and Weber, uh, on the division side.
Okay.
That once the turn signal, uh, goes away, the light to go east or west is very quick. So it's like, you know, it, it doesn't, doesn't stay green for.
I will contact the county because that is their responsibility, not ours. But I will reach out to their, uh, traffic signal department tomorrow and have them send their contractor out and look at it.
Thank you.
You, you're talking east-west direction.
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
I have nothing on the agenda this evening. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions of the police chief?
Yeah, I have, uh, one. I know it's been a couple of years since we've had snow like this. Last year we didn't get much, but just refresh my memory. I know like we've had the plowing done, there's still cars still parked on the street, never cleaned up, you know, never moved anything. And what's our procedure going forward with those particular vehicles? I would take it they've all been ticketed already?
Yes. We wrote sixty-eight total citations over the, uh, snowstorm. Typically, if, if we could see, uh, car's been sitting there, maybe we had another snowstorm, usually by the second or third snow event, the car's still sitting there. And if it's preventing us from plowing that street safely, we will tow them. It's very rare that it happens, but we have done that in the past. If it's becoming a hazard, we will go ahead and remove those.
All right, because there's still quite a few cars still on the street in Ward One that haven't been moved or cleaned off or anything. And we got another snow coming tonight, another one later this weekend. And if they're still there, I hope we have some way to get that taken care of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, for everything this weekend and for all these nice tickets.
No problem.
Keep it up.
Okay, community development, um, we have, we do not have any agenda items. Do you have anything to add, Blaine?
No, Dean didn't have anything for us to share that's made in there. I have some stuff for upcoming workshop.
Okay. Unfinished business, anyone? New business, anybody? Committee liaison reports. Claudia?
I'll start. Just a reminder, Winter Fest is this coming Saturday from three to six. We will start with the parade, uh, three P M. sharp, hopefully. After that will be the lighting, uh, the mayor and his, um, little childrens will be turning the lights on for the city. And we'll start the event with food trucks, free food, food this year. It's all free. And we're going to have, um, working with Blaine. We created a lot of good things. Thank you for your help, um, with your ideas as well. And I also want to thank the volunteers that are going to be helping us this weekend. And I'm going to start with Glenn Gorky that helped us to put the heaters and some stuff together. Don Seaman for all his hard work of moving a lot of stuff down from downstairs, including a box of paper towels. I'm not going to say something else. Jamie, thank you for helping this past Friday as well with fluffing the trees and doing some things. I know we have more volunteers coming, um, this Friday with you, Tina. So anyone would like to volunteer? We have about twenty volunteers, but we can always take more. So we hope to see everyone there and it's going to be a nice event. It doesn't matter if it's cold. We have, if it's cold, we have hot chocolate, we have, uh, hot coffee, and we're going to have smores. What else we're going to have? Do you want to add anything to that?
We had fire pits this year.
Fire pits?
Some of the heat warmers that you noted, Glenn. Then there's a lot of activities as well as, uh, the power district has been providing some resources and, uh, the county, excuse me, the, um, the township. And we have a list of, uh, really all the sponsors and activities on the city's website as well.
Awesome. And, uh, the last thing, we also have, um, the, um, holiday decorating contest. We're running out of time, so get out there, even though it's cold, decorate, enter. The last, um, date to submit your form will be December eighth. The winner will be announced at the December fifteenth, uh, city council meeting. So hope to see a lot of you there. Thank you, mayor.
Anybody else? Okay. City council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Alderman Kubal?
Uh, nothing at this time, mayor.
Alderman Elbert?
I just wish everybody a, a happy and safe season and be, uh, be careful in the snow.
Alderman Sapity?
Nothing at this time, mayor.
Alderperson Oberlin?
Well, I'd like to reiterate that at this time of year with this cold brutal weather and this snow, um, if you have elderly neighbors or handicapped neighbors or anybody that might need a little help, checking in on them, making sure they're okay, uh, because this weather can, you know, in an instant can hurt you. So reach out and touch somebody who needs a little help.
Alderwoman Gazal?
Just, uh, thank you to everyone, uh, with Public Works and the police for taking care of our streets and our safety. And also just a reminder that the, um, Feather Fork opened this last, uh, Wednesday, so stop there to give them support. Thank you, mayor.
Alderman Jefferson?
I'd just like to wish everyone a, uh, happy holiday season. And, uh, I'd like to thank my esteemed colleague for the Christmas decorations and all the work you put into the committee to pull off this event.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Alderman Disario?
Just want to ask everybody to be safe out there and give some room to the plows and the city workers so that we can get the streets cleared for y'all and just be, be safe this, uh, winter season.
Alderman Dyke?
Uh, nothing at this time, mayor.
Public comment, anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by, who was it? I heard you.
Everybody.
Alderman Disario.
I'll give it to them.
You had it last time. Roll call, please, Chris.
Marks Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Elbert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Angelo Disario?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?